Good evening, welcome to the first in-person city council meeting of the city of Asheville in over a year. We are delighted to have you here at Harris Cherokee where we have opportunities to spread out for those that would care to do so. So meet your Asheville City Council in person who got elected, some of whom got elected only this, in the last year, 2020. So here we are. Tonight, we are going to begin our agenda with two proclamations. And we have two very special proclamations on our agenda this evening, and I'm going to begin that by, oh, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting my in-person. Boy, I used to do this like the back of my hand. First, we're going to get up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, I will begin with. Maggie, I'll go over the, yeah, when we get going. Okay, so we're, I'll begin with the first proclamation, and the first proclamation concerns Juneteenth, and I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, Emancipation Day, or Liberation Day honors the day that enslaved people in Galveston, Texas learned that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas the signing happened almost two years earlier, but Union soldiers did not arrive with the news until June 19th, 1865. And whereas that day, known as Juneteenth, is a day of celebration of liberation, emancipation, and freedom for African-Americans. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas we must collectively strive to close gaps of immeasurable distance between us and affirm the promise of the Declaration of Independence that all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and hold that the purpose of the American government must be to secure these rights for all. And whereas the city council is committed to identifying actionable items to improve policies and procedures, to improve access to opportunities, and to ensure that employees do not experience inequalities in the city of Asheville government. And whereas Buncombe County and the city of Asheville recognize June 19th as Juneteenth, and the Friday before shall be a paid holiday for city of Asheville government employees. And whereas annual observance of Juneteenth will provide community members and employees of the city of Asheville an opportunity to reflect on the impact of slavery and remember those who were enslaved here and their profound contributions to our community. And now therefore I, Estory Manheimer, Mayor of the city of Asheville, joined by the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth in the city of Asheville, and implore all community members to honor June 19th as a day of reflection, cultural and public education, earnest assessment, planning, and commitment to the end of systemic racism, and all forms of dehumanization and threaten equality and freedom for all, which threaten equality and freedom for all. In witness whereof, I appear unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Asheville, North Carolina, to be affixed this eighth day of June 2021. And the city manager has already administratively created Juneteenth as a paid holiday for city employees. So thank you. All right, we have one other proclamation this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Gwen Whistler to read that one.
Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated nationwide. Probably should turn that on. Nationwide in June each year, and whereas the city of Asheville's LGBTQ community is a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community, and whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the riots that took place at Stonewall Inn in Manhattan, New York on the morning of June 28th, 1969, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBTQ rights movement. And whereas despite great progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for who they are. And whereas the city of Asheville stands with the LGBTQ community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all, and whereas the city of Asheville will continue to defend and advocate for LGBTQ rights as human rights, and whereas the city of Asheville strives to make our community a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated equally. And whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred. Now therefore, Estory Manheimer, the mayor of the city of Asheville, does hereby proclaim June 2021 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Asheville, and urges all people to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. In witness thereof, she sets her hand and seal of the city of Asheville to be affixed this eighth day of June 2021.
Okay, those are our two proclamations for this evening, so I'm going to move now into the consent agenda, which is a slightly complicated. First, I need a motion to recuse Councilmember Mosley from item O. Do I have a motion to recuse Councilmember Mosley from item O?
So moved.
A second.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I do not have to do a roll call, but.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So now, I do need to have items C1 and 2 considered separately, so can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda without items C1 and C2?
So moved.
Second.
Gwen.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda without items C1 and C2. All those in favor, except for Councilmember Mosley, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now I need a motion to approve item C1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, it was a tie. Okay, so Sandra is the motion maker, and Vice Mayor is the second. All right, all those.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Before the vote. So I want to take responsibility for my no vote in advance. I have reviewed the most recent annual report for the HIDA grant, which is rooted in HR 5210, the 1988 federal bill that started the war on drugs, a failed war against Americans in their homes and in the streets, and reinstated the federal death penalty. And when I see that there are high-traffic drug areas in our community, that tells me we have high economic development needs and high opportunity needs. I thought we were going to be reimagining public safety, and so I'm very concerned that this is doing it the old way. And I know that we need to address root causes, this is something we can do with our community, but I also don't see that we have the capacity in our public safety staffing to move from community policing to even this federal intention. So that's why I'm voting no on this tonight.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, this is a funding that is, we're a pass-through agency, and it funds surrounding counties. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comment question before we vote on item C1? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, and do I have a motion to approve item C2?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve item C2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have adopted the consent agenda.
Mayor, I think you need a vote on the refusing on Councilwoman Mosley.
We did.
Did you?
Yeah. Didn't we? We did. We did.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have two presentations and reports tonight. The first is a presentation regarding the Dr. Wesley Grant Senior Southside Center Gymnasium Expansion and Pool Construction Project. And Roderick Simmons, in his exiting presentation, is going to make the presentation.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to be the first department director since the break to do the presentation. I appreciate it very much. Tonight, we're going to talk about the grant, Recreation Center improvements, and the Southside recreational opportunities in the Southside community. Some of the takeaways are the strategic priorities, community engagement, the Southside neighborhood, and recreational services, and a summary of the project. It's what we want to have from this presentation. So some of the council goals that we're trying to meet with this project is equitable, diverse community, and how the Parks Recreation Department plays a role in that, providing that and fostering it through equity in terms of programming facilities and staff that we provide. So some of the project history. 2009, council adopted the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and from that master plan, the Southside community was ranked very high with programs and services that was needed to serve the community. In 2006, council authorized a facility needs assessment for our swimming pools. There was funding allocated for the swimming pools and wanted to figure out which pools need to be funded first. And fortunate enough, in 2006, we were fortunate to pass a bond to improve some of our facilities, and the grant of Recreation Center addition was one of those projects that was high priority. Since the bond was passed, we had numerous planning workshops, and that led to the design concept and the construction drawings, which I'll go over later in my presentation. So how do we make these improvements from the master plan? Community engagement is a very high priority for our department, and also determining where facilities are placed in the community. So the engagement plan for the Southside community was a series of town hall meetings, Southside Recreational Opportunity Survey to reach out to the public, and a series of community meetings to make sure that we hear the community in, bring them along as we go. Also talking about the engagement part of it, the community events, and also the display boards of the project, and community comments during the center hours. We had an open house down in the Southside community, especially with the Rad-Tip construction going on, and then the city drop-off offices, as I mentioned. So part of the engagement process, in 2006, when the project was first envisioned in the community, there was staff-led effort in terms of trying to do the outreach part of it. 2007, when I started as director, my first community meeting was actually with the Southside community, and they let me know very clearly that the city and the department wasn't hearing their needs, or listened to what they said, or involved them in the process. So I promised them that every step of the way in this project that we would involve them, to make sure that they understood that the city recognized their needs and we want them at the table. So they made that very clear to me. So between 2006 and 15, a lot of our efforts was department-led. It was staff setting up the meetings, engaging with the communities, getting the surveys, putting it on the board, coming back telling them that. So in 2016, we create, we, excuse me, we created our Equity Action Plan for our department. In that plan, it was based off of our master plan, and the components of it was getting more community involvement, actually letting the community lead the process and determining how to engage. Lot of that was feedback from the community of the city, not knowing the different avenues to reach the community, not knowing how to touch the different key leaders in each community. So we felt it was important to let the community drive that process, and the city staff would just facilitate it. But that way, it has the grassroots effort, and the community members actually decide how things move forward. So that was in 2016 when that citizen engagement outreach effort began, and they laid out the whole process for engagement on this project. So this is a community engagement planning team. We reached out to the housing authority, who's our close working partner, neighborhood residents, partners, including Green Opportunity and Southside Advisory Council. And here are the members, there were a lot more community members on the team, but this is the core group that actually put the program together and actually outlined all of the things that I'm going to go through next in terms of outreach and things like that that we did. So we had 221 hours of outreach over this time period. The advisory board group and community meetings, we had design workshops and exercise meetings. We also had a youth design exercise meeting and social events and community. So the youth design exercise meeting, we spent a lot of time, a lot of the facility users are young, under 18. So we made sure that we heard their voice, and they were involved in the process, and not just left out and just enjoying the facilities, to make sure it met their needs. So looking at the feedback that we received, the location of the pool, and honoring the history of Wall Street Park, those are the two things that came out of the recreational service survey that we put together. So the Wall Street Park Community Investment Project, so Wall Street Park, it's one of the oldest, well, it is the oldest swimming pool that we have in the system. It's 4,000 square feet, and it only accommodates 217 users. When you compare that to Rec Park Pool, which is 14,233 square feet, and holds about 866 users, and you also have Mountain Hills, that's 7,500 square feet and holds about 694. So you can see the equity gap there between Walton Street Pool and the other two pools we have in the city. So this is attendance, last year we didn't operate the swimming pools, but the prior year, just to give you an understanding of the actual users. Wall Street Pool only had 505 for the whole summer. Out of that 505, 373 was 18 and under. 129 was 30 and under, a lot of those are the parents that bought the younger kids. And only three people over age 31 that actually use this facility. So it's a lot of younger kids using this facility. So from the feedback that we received, a lot of the adults advocated for preserving the history of the park because it touched so many lives and generations, and the pool was just one element of the history. So a lot of community citizens focused on the pool, and a lot of the other community members focused on the park as a whole. It's the first, well, the only park in the system that was designed by African-American farmers. So it has a special place in the community, and preserving that history is what a lot of the citizens would like to see. And the youth advocated for building a new pool with capacity to accommodate more swimmers, fun activities, and programming, which you expect kids to say. A lot of the kids, when I talked to them, there was a couple of kids' comments that stood out. One was a kid said that he likes to go to Rec Park, but his parents can't take him all the time, and so we offered free swim days at Walton, and he said he would, he'd come on those days, but he preferred to be at Rec Park because it's more fun, and the water's cold at Walton, because we never heat the water up. The other young kid mentioned that his parents won't let him walk up to Walton Street Park because it's not safe. So he's not allowed even to go on the free swim days to be able to access the pool, because his parents didn't feel like it was safe in the location that it was in. And also, the summer camp kids really gave insight, they actually walk up to the pool, and said it was a long walk, too far of a walk for them to have to enjoy swimming in the swimming pool. So they figured walking up the street was a long walk. You know, seven, eight years old, it would seem like a long walk. So a lot of the kids centered around having fun and enjoying the facility, which is our next generation that'll be using the facility. So part of that understanding that the history of the park is important, we looked at having, we're looking at having Southside rising, lead that effort, both on what do we do to preserve the history of the park, and also the programming at the grant center when we get to that phase of it. What we want to, once again, this is part of an equity plan, is reaching out to community groups that are embedded in the community, to be that voice that have the relationships that understand the community, where city staff have to try to build that. We want to embed, work with partners that's already in the community, embedded in the everyday operations of the neighborhood. So they'll be collecting feedback, looking at ways to preserve the park, and the best way to honor that history. So summary of the project. So the Grant Center, this is an addition, it's not a new project. The first project was approved for the Grant Center in 2009, construction finished in 2010. There wasn't enough funding to complete the gymnasium portion, so council authorized funding of the first phase and promised the community that we would come back with the second phase at a later date. Fortunately, recession hit, the budgets got tight, and then we had a lag in there of trying to keep momentum just because of funding. And then the bond, fortunately enough, in 2016, brought the project back alive, and we started having engagement at that point. But it's adding to the existing facility now, adding a multipurpose room, community room, solar array, additional parking, and new sidewalks. And the solar array is trying to be, work into the sustainability and elite certification, addressing that with any new facilities that we build. I just wanted to highlight that for Amber, she'll be happy I said that. So in terms of programming, the new addition will provide additional 162 hours of recreational programming. It expands the space for youth and creates the capacity for teen program, which we currently don't have. If you can envision, the current program room we have right now is 20 by 60. It's the only program room in the facility, and holds about 30 youth at a time. So we really don't have a lot of program space with the first phase, so this will give us an additional amount of space to be able to do community programs. In terms of the swimming pool portion, will be 220-person capacity, zero-entry toddler play zone, changing room, restrooms, lounging, picnic area, in a nice facility. Kind of having it on the same site, you have dual effects of having blended facilities, so you have outdoor courts, you have other amenities that families can enjoy other than it just being at the pool. So with this, you'll have a well-rounded recreation center facility, like most communities where it's all embedded in one, and parents can go on one site and be able to experience different activities. While the parents may be doing a class, the kids can be in the pool or on the playground or the basketball court. So it brings everything into one hub. So as I mentioned, the outdoor facilities would be outdoor basketball courts, picnic areas, rain garden, landscape enhancements, and a connection to, well, it used to be called Town Branch, but Nasty Branch, Greenway, really, that name gets me every time, used to call it the Town Branch. Connecting to that, and then outdoor lighting, so these will be the amenities that it connects with as well. Project timeline, the internal review was in 2015, as you can see, and city council management updated in 2016. Public engagement kicked off in 2017. Construction design brought to council last year to start that process. And then we're looking at the construction contract this month at the next council meeting for council hopefully approval. Terms of addition, to the addition, the funding, at the June 22nd council meeting, we're looking to award the contract not to exceed 6.7 million, and that's containing the project contingency as well. So some of the key takeaways are the strategic priorities of that neighborhood, community engagement process that we covered, we went above and beyond to include every section of the population and every user group, and also the recreational services. With the recreational service plan, we outline all of the programs and opportunities that the community would like for the youth to see, and in a summary of the project. So any discussion?
Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation and congratulations on your recent retirement. So in the beginning, we talked about the square footage of the various pools. Can you explain a little bit why this, in the end, isn't a larger pool? Unless I heard something incorrectly, it's actually smaller.
Yes, so the slide right. Oh, I'm sorry. This side's right here.
So currently, it's 4,000, but the new one would be 3,100.
The new one would be 3,100, and it's cost-driven?
Cost-driven.
Correct. So if we were to build a new pool, it'd be $4 million, with the current funding that we have on hand, out of the $2 million that council authorized, it gives us the ability to create a facility in conjunction with this one, because it'd be hard to find another $2 million, but this is one way that we could bring it in. So it's not a deal, but on this site, there's ways to expand in the future if council wishes to do that. It's also with the gymnasium. The community asks for a larger gymnasium, to be able to grow into the community and provide just not one, per se, basketball court square area, but footage for two. But we didn't have enough funding, but we designed the outdoor courts, so in the future, if we wanted to expand the building out, you'll be able to do that. So the same thing with the swimming pool, we'll be able to expand it in the future.
That's great, thank you.
I'd just like to say, thank you very much for presenting this, and I wish that we would have already had this information out to the community earlier. I think that a lot of people felt that the community was being left behind, but I see this project actually brings a lot of people together and also helps the community understand that the city is invested in making the Southside area a better place. And that's the only thing I can say, I wish we would have known earlier, so we could have always, all of us actually promoted basically what we were doing at the Grant Center, to actually open the communication up with the community when they would have been more open and not feeling that they weren't left behind. Thank you.
And one of the things that, over the last 10 years, council went from investing $27,000, the previous 10 years, from 2000 to 2009, $27,000 in this community, where from 2009 to if this project's approved, it'll be $13 million that council has authorized to spend in the Southside community, which is amazing. That is just amazing, and I don't really think the public understand exactly how much council has invested in this community over the last 10 years, but it's a lot of money, and that needs to be celebrated, too.
Are you concerned that the community may not be aware of the final, I mean, because we heard a lot about the community engagement and all the individuals involved, but is there, is there a sense that the Southside community might not be aware of the final product?
Of course, yes, yes, because I, and the reason I say that is because I've spoken to many people, and they basically feel like they're not doing anything. All I kept hearing them say is they're closing Walton Street Park, and they're not giving us anything, and they're taking away, and I mean, this was on Facebook, everything. So I'm saying, had we had an idea of what was in the makings for the Southside community, we could have had a better conversation with the community. That's all, yeah.
And there was a lot of conversation. Councilwoman Smith can address some of that.
Well, I'm not going to address that.
What I'm saying, in terms of.
The conversations, but I do have a question because.
Yeah, in terms of the engagement team that we put together, that was a big concern and topic that we discussed of how to get that information out, because we've heard those comments for years, and we wanted to bring the community along. So a lot of the strategic approach to it was making sure that we bring the community members along with that.
So you're saying, so all I'm just trying to figure out is this, I know you had the community engagement, but where was the disconnect where the community was not more aware of what was there? That's the only thing I was concerned about.
Right, yeah, and one of the reasons we put the, let the community team design that is to make sure we reach everyone, but every project, you can always have individuals that's not engaged as much as others, and we just try to go above and beyond with our engagement plan to make sure we capture them. But unfortunately, a lot of projects, it's hard to make sure you capture everyone, but we were sending out emails, everyone that was on the mailing list at the town hall meeting put their email address down. We also have staff at the center that was able to communicate that.
But as you know, the people that are usually on that mailing list and that show up at council meetings, our staff, unfortunately, there is a disconnect between the actual community. You know, we're all, I mean, they're all aware, but the community is not. So I'm just saying, I think we should just do a better job in communicating, you know, these things to the community. Thank you.
I wanted to comment on the size of the pool, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilwoman Turner, because Walton Pool, as it stands, is very small. I think we, a lot of people in this facility, we've swam there, learned how to swim there. Is there any way that you can take another portion of this total project and not build it out in full? Maybe the gymnasium, because we already have a gymnasium at the Eddington Center. Can we get the full scale of the pool right now, and then maybe have the larger, or the grander phase of the gym at a later date? Because I think that matters.
Yes, and with design, anything is possible. The designers have finished the construction drawing now, it'll be more cost added to the project, but, you know, if council wishes to do that. I would, I would say that, you know, adding on to the facility in the future is a lot easier than shrinking the gym now and adding it to the pool, because with the public, they were promised that this gymnasium would have been built 10 years ago. So it's that public trust that we're trying to continue to move forward with. So it's just if we had a plan in place to come back in the future and add that component back. Some of the feedback that we received was having a gym that is larger, other than Eddington, be able to host more activities, because that gym is not adequate as well with the space-wise. So it'd be kind of a trade-off, you get a larger swimming pool that's only operated three months out of the year versus a gym that's used year-round. So you've just got to make that cost scenario.
One follow-up question, do you know the future possible size if the pool were to be? be fully expanded?
Jay, you want to jump on that one? How, it could, it depends on the cost, I mean, depends on the funding.
I just meant the square footage, is it the area that is...
So where we designing it, there's room to expand. There's, there's nothing that's going to impede from expanding the swimming pool for as large as we want it on that site because it's all out there. We're not putting anything in the way, currently, we completed the first, we left room for expansion of this gymnasium so that we're not taking out amenities with that. So this pool, the area we're locating it, you can be able to expand it and you're not going to impact any improvements that's going on the site now.
This is Kim, I just wanted to share that I, I hear a lot of the concerns that my colleagues are hearing as well, and I, I know that folks are gathering at the Eddington Center, the South Side Community Garden, and the Walton Street Park, but those are the places that I also hear a request for investment. So what I didn't hear today was what are we going to do about honoring the historic Walton Street Pool?
Yeah, so the South Side Rising has taken that initiative, once again, to embed themselves in the community to get that feedback, to figure out what's the best way that the community feel to honor and preserve that. And we're going to work on implementing that plan once the community decides what's the right way and the best way to honor the history and preserve the heritage of the park.
So timewise, this would come to council at our next meeting because apparently we're going to put everything on our next agenda, and, and it would be up for a vote at the next meeting. If you all are not comfortable with that, let's say so, you know, if you want it to go back for some more community input, if you want different options to be looked at, this would, you know, just think about it, that would, that would be the kind of thing we would want to give direction on. Roderick will probably go ahead and retire, but, 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 you know, and I am hearing, we have construction drawings, that sounds like a really costly pivot at this point. So I just, you know, go ahead.
We actually, Jay Dundas, Capital Projects Director, we actually have a fully bid project, and so we, at the 22nd, we'd be pushing our, our bid limits and we may end up having to go out to rebid the project.
Okay, so yeah, that's good, good information to know, so...
That's incredibly important because construction costs are rising daily, it seems.
Sure, right, and to change things would be extremely expensive. Okay, all right, so the idea to, thank you for indulging us, we, this was supposed to be on our agenda to vote on, and we asked for it to be a presentation just because we hadn't all had a chance to see it and thought it'd be a good chance to also let the community, those who haven't already seen the final proposal, see it. So thank you all for that, and so it will, unless something dramatic changes, be on our next meeting's agenda for, for a vote. So thank you. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the manager's report, and Deborah Campbell, the city manager, will take it away.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here. It feels good to see faces, live faces. So I'm going to provide you with an update, pretty much focusing in on our initiatives around reparations. I'm going to hopefully step through these slides relatively quickly, and I'm just going to turn this just a little bit. As you all know, last summer, the city council adopted a resolution supporting community reparations for Black Asheville. I'm not going to go over all of the details of the resolution, but essentially, I think we could capture the content of the resolution just by identifying kind of the definitions of reparations, the action of repairing something, the making of amends for wrongs or injury done, the making of amends for a wrong one has done by paying money to or otherwise helping those who have been wronged. And so essentially, I think that's the essence of the, of the resolution, but one specific direction within the resolution was to establish a process, and the resolution specifically asked the city manager or directs the city manager to develop this process. And what I'm going to talk to you all a little bit about is the first phase of this process. We started out with kind of thinking there was a need to have some information sharing, kind of truth-telling, an opportunity for even people across the country to come to our community and talk about the efforts around reparations. And so we've prepared a speaker series that's underway currently. We have recruited all of our speakers and we divided this speaker series into three parts, a past, the present, and the future. We kicked off last week with our speakers around the past. This Thursday, we will be having speakers talk about our present, and then our last speaker series on the 17th will be a discussion of Asheville's future. And so why are we doing this and what do we hope to accomplish? We truly want to have a better understanding of what have been the policies that either currently exist or have existed in the past that have impacted the lives particularly of black people in Asheville. We want to identify and understand the current disparities and the needs and what we should really be focusing on, and I know there's a lot of debate about whether something at a local level around reparations can be undertaken. We think that we can, and we think that legally, we can do this. We don't have to call it reparations, we can call it repair. Identify barriers to addressing generational wealth, inspire our community to identify collaborative opportunities, and hear community perspectives, which is actually the most important part of this. So all of the comments that we receive as part of this speaker series will kind of be foundational for when we, or you all, create your reparations commission. They will use that information and the feedback that we've gotten from the community and the information that we've gathered from national speakers and local speakers. And this is just a highlight from the event last week. I just wanted to give you all kind of some numbers. We had approximately 100 people, and we are actually in this facility, but in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. We had 100 people, again, in attendance that were there live, 183 views on the, I guess, YouTube, and 45 people called in to listen by phone, so a total of 328 people were, were connected. Generally, the format for these sessions are the doors open at 5:00 PM. We have a local DJ, Mr. Damian Davis, provides music. We have resiliency trainers, MC Ellis and Michael Hayes. They kind of lead us in a resiliency talk before we get into some heavy conversations about, around a very heavy issue. We also have provided an opportunity for people who are uncomfortable with, you know, relaying or conveying their thoughts in that type of a format or venue. We're allowing people to be videotaped, and we are retaining that information, and it will be, be shared again with, with you all, with the community, as well as, as with the reparations commission. So we have, as I said, two events coming up, one on June 10th and the other one on June 17th, and you can see our list of illustrious speakers that will be attending. So if you miss the event, the videos can be found at our Public Engagement Hub and YouTube channel. Comments can be emailed to us, you can call a number and leave a voicemail message. We're also having comment cards that'll be available at some of the community pop-up events, and these will be led by the Buncombe County Community Engagement Team, and we want you to kind of stay tuned for additional information. We're also very, very grateful and thankful to our sponsors, Explorer Asheville, the TDA, and McKibben Hospitality, as well as Duke Energy for helping sponsor this event. Also, a really important action that we hope will be approved later on this evening is you have a item related to funding for this effort, a resolution and a budget amendment in the amount of 2.1 million in the city's general capital projects fund utilizing land sale proceeds to provide initial funding for the reparations initiative. And I think there was a question about, well, how will this be spent? What are the projects? We don't know yet. What we do know is that we have asked the commission, once it is formed, to provide us with short, medium, and long-term initiatives. And what we want to do is to be poised, be able to, particularly with some of the short-term recommendations, which we are asking the commission in a very short time period, I think it's January 2022, to give us some immediate things that we can do, and that's how this funding will be, will be utilized. And so again, the next steps is the formation of the commission, and we don't have all of the details about how the commission will be formed over the next couple of weeks and possibly maybe a month. We will come up with a recommendation to, to both city council as well as the county commission in terms of the process of making those, those appointments. And then phase three will obviously be the really, really hard work, which is making recommendations and providing those to both the elected boards and finalizing a report. We are projecting out to April 2023. It may be longer, it may be shorter, but we hope that we will come up with a report that truly is transformational, particularly in the lives of black people in the city of Asheville. And with that, I think that's my last slide. I'd be more than happy to take any comments, but I, I do want to just say thank you all for your attendance at the event last Thursday, and I'll open it up for any comments or feedback.
I just wanted to thank you and the staff for your hard work putting together the speaker series. I thought it was a wonderful event, and I know, I think all of us were able to, to attend and, and enjoyed it, and it seemed that those in attendance enjoyed it as well.
Thank you very much. All righty, thank you.
Can you remind me what the county's commitment is around the reparations initiative?
So they have not presented any kind of budget or recommended funding for this initiative as of yet, is my understanding.
And I'll just share, the chairman reached out to me today again to talk about this because I think there is a desire to sync up on their part with us in terms of a long-term funding commitment. And I know that's been a little bit more of a challenging conversation on our side, not from the desire to commit, but an identifying a funding source that we feel doesn't create greater disparity. So I think they're eager to, to put a number to it, put a timeline to it, and, and make that commitment, so, so it's very much out there. It's, it's, it's just a matter of, of, of the, so, of us agreeing to something. So I think it would be helpful for the managers to continue to talk, I mean, the managers talk all the time, and the staffs are very much synced up, but I think we need to provide some direction about what we're, what we're aiming at so that they have something to line up with.
Well, we, we definitely hope that if you all adopt this suggested at least starter funding, and then depending upon the work of the commission, they may come up with other alternative funding sources. We hope that this definitely is not a public sector initiative alone. We need the private sector also to participate, but certainly with Buncombe County, we are hoping obviously that they will participate as well, state, federal. It takes a village. Thank you all. Is that it?
Thank you. Any other? Yeah. Okay, we're up to the public hearing on the budget, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna have, well, the manager kick it off to our finance director here in just a minute. So we have done several work sessions already, and I think Tony's probably going to talk a little bit about the history of our budget process this year, but just to remind folks, tonight is the public hearing on the budget, so this is our opportunity after this brief presentation to hear from you, and then the vote on the budget does not actually happen until the next meeting, and that is the statutorily required process.
And Mayor, I'll just, I'll just kick it over to Tony for him to, in the interest of time.
All right, well, thank you all. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. We're going to be very brief tonight with our presentation from staff. You all have heard from us a lot over the last few months related to the budget, and so now tonight is your opportunity to hear from the community on the budget. But I do have a few slides I'm going to go through before we turn it back over to you all for the public hearing. First of all, just kind of an overview of our proposed budget, and this is the slide we showed you all at your presentation a couple of weeks ago. The proposed budget that we brought to you all at the end of May represented the internal work that we've done over the last few months, reflected council priorities and community input, and reflects a continuation of the reimagining public safety process that we began last fall. The proposal is a balanced and fiscally responsible budget. It funds investments in a number of council priorities, and I'll run through some of those highlights in a moment. It does fund those investments through a property tax recommendation that is three cents above the revenue-neutral property tax rate. It does continue to fund our core community services in a time of rising costs, and, and we haven't talked a whole lot about this through our presentation, but it continues to funding for our multi-year capital improvement program as well. The work on the budget will not end this month, and it'll continue on next fiscal year as well, and so we want to highlight that with that last bullet on this slide, which is that the work will continue next fiscal year, and that includes work on a lot of our major initiatives, reimagining public safety, the reparations initiative that you just heard city manager Deborah Campbell talk about, as well as strategic use of the American Rescue Plan funding to help achieve some of your goals. So just a calendar of where we've been with the budget. It's been a long budget process. I think you all know we wrapped up last year's, or the current year budget that we're in last September, and we turned around soon after that and began the current budget process internally in November. And so we've been working on budget internally really since November. We came to you all with our first budget work session in early March. We had a total of five budget work sessions with you all as we worked our way through the process this year, and then we brought you the manager's proposed budget on, on May 25th, which has led us to where we're at tonight, which is the public hearing that is required by North Carolina general statutes. It's not on these slides, but we did along the way get input from the community, so this is really not the first time the community has had a chance to weigh in on the budget. There were six community input sessions in March and April that were led by staff and our consultants. We also had two employee engagement sessions as well. So the budget, the budget that we brought you all two weeks reflected you all's strategies and priorities. It reflected specifically those strategies from the Vision 2036, the priorities that you all identified in 2019, and the four priorities that you all identified at your retreat in April, which included reparations, reimagining public safety, compensation, and utilization of the American Rescue Plan funding. So the response strategy, and that really is the budget, and I'll run through some of the highlights quickly, is that we've utilized the internal and community strategies to guide future investments and the investments that we've made in this, this budget. So it wouldn't be a budget presentation without a slide that has some numbers on it. So this is a summary of our proposed budget. We showed you all this a couple of weeks ago. The total budget for FY '22, proposed budget is a little over 200 million. The general fund, which is the largest part of that... The general fund, which is the largest part of that budget, is about 147 million. That funds most of the traditional budget services that folks think of, public safety, parks, public works, and those kinds of things. The other activities listed on this page are enterprise funds, water, transit, parking, stormwater, the Harris Center where we're at tonight, and our street cut fund. So, when we talked to you all at the last couple of work sessions, and then on May 25th when we presented the budget, we presented the budget in terms of investment categories, and we identified eight major categories of investments for FY '22. Those included reparations, reimagining public safety, employees in the workforce, neighborhoods and housing, youth, transportation, environment, and economic development. And so, on the next few slides, I'm just gonna hit some of the major highlights for those investments. I want to start with reparations. And as City Manager Deborah Campbell mentioned, there's an agenda item later this evening for you all to adopt funding for reparations. And so, that's a slight adjustment from the original plan that we presented to you all on May 25th. In that plan, in that proposed budget, we were proposing $1.2 million reparations that would be funded out of our fund balance and that would be adopted with the proposed budget on June 22nd. Tonight, the revised recommendation, which you all will be voting on, increases that amount to $2.1 million. It's funded out of the sale of white labs, which occurred several months ago, and the adoption will occur tonight. So, when we bring you all, if you all approve the revised recommendation tonight, when we bring you the budget for adoption in two weeks, it will reflect the removal of the fund balance appropriation and the $2.1 million that will have already been approved as of tonight. A few other items we wanted to highlight in terms of new investments, neighborhood and housing, we have $150,000 set aside in our budget for a homeowners' tax assistance program. We're working on a program, or the county's working on a program right now, and we hope to partner with them to be able to help out folks in the community with increases, potential increases in their property tax bills. We also have $150,000 in the budget to fund small-scale neighborhood grants. That would be coupled with $50,000 that we already have in the budget to bring that total to 200,000. In terms of investments in youth, we have two items in our Parks and Recreation Department we're gonna highlight. One is an additional $450,000 investment in our recreation centers that will allow us to expand evening and weekend hours. The second investment is 300,000 to increase, improve our level of service and maintenance in some of our high-use parks and facilities. New investments in the area of transportation, there's $1.1 million in the budget for some additional transit enhancements, which include extended evening hours and increased frequency on two of our south routes. And those enhancements would begin in October of this year. And then, finally, on employees and workforce, we have about $7.9 million programmed in the budget to implement the recommendations of the Archer Compensation Study, which includes the recommendations around public safety pay plans. And then, outside of public safety, it would bring all other employees either up to the new minimums or provide employees with a 2.5% pay increase, whichever is greater. To fund those investments, and we talked to you all about this at your last presentation, we are proposing a tax rate that is three cents above revenue-neutral. This was a revaluation year in the county, so everyone got new property values, and the revenue-neutral rate, based on those new property values, is 38.3 cents. We're proposing a tax rate three cents above that, as I mentioned, a tax rate of 41.3 cents to fund those investments. And then, finally, as I mentioned, the work will not end after we adopt the budget here in June. The thing you will probably, the thing that you will see most quickly will be us coming back to you in July and August to talk about a spending plan for the American Rescue Plan dollars. Staff is working on developing that now. We're also gonna continue the public safety, reimagining public safety work, and that includes a number of initiatives, planning for 911 consolidation with Buncombe County, assessing APD's role in Asheville Housing, in the Asheville Housing Authority and Asheville City Schools, and developing proposals for mental health, substance abuse, and houselessness response. Other items we'll be working on, City Manager talked about the next steps in the reparations process. I mentioned the partnering with Buncombe County on the homeowners' tax assistance program. We're also gonna continue talking with the community about needs in terms of recreation programming. And then, we will be coming back to you all with a mid-year assessment of our stormwater and sanitation services with potential fee adjustments brought forward with that. So, I believe that is my last slide. So, I will end there and turn it back over to the mayor for the public hearing.
Okay. And then, before we do that, any questions, council members?
I actually do have a question. So, I want to say thank you for the document that you sent me with the vacancies from April 21st. When I reviewed the lowest compensation and the highest compensation for those, it seemed like we have a 7.6 and 10.5 million range of vacancies. But then, when I saw the wage and compensation was gonna be 7.9, is that on the lowest end or on the highest end?
Not quite sure I follow your question. The 7.9 is based off of the positions that we have currently budgeted, which does include those vacancies because our assumption is that we will fill those positions over time. We do include a vacancy assumption in the budget, and we do that every year. We increased it this year a little bit, just to acknowledge the fact that we do have a lot of vacancies, a lot more than we typically have at this time of year.
Right. So, from that document, we had 168 vacancies. So, if I remember right, the vacancy assumption is 1.1 million?
No, that was the vacancy assumption in the current budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could just respond a little bit to the number of vacancies, yes, we have vacancies within our police department that has been well documented. But also, last year as a cost-saving measure, we actually froze positions. We did not hire unless a department could provide a compelling argument for why we should hire. We just did not know what was gonna happen to our budget as it relates to COVID. So, a lot of those vacancies are due to the fact that we did not allow staff to be hired. And we are asking that we unfreeze those positions because we really, really need, we need to staff up.
And the proposed budget assumes the unfreezing of those positions.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
I think we have a lot of people here that might have one burning question that you should answer. I guess burning is a bad pun, but about pay raises within the fire department, will the pay raises result in all firefighters receiving the pay at a level of the living, the current living wage calculation based on, well, we have different ways we calculate it, but if you can answer that question, and maybe Peggy would be, I don't know if she's here too, but.
Yeah. I mean, the starting rate for firefighters, once they're out of the academy, would be, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but would be a little over $44,000 under the new plan, which I do believe would bring them, based on their scheduling, up above the $15 an hour minimum pay. Peggy, if there's anything you would, okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Okay.
I have to ask one more question. So, I appreciate the $150,000 for mitigating the impact on homeowners. Do we have plans to mitigate the impact on renters to expand our partnerships? I'll assume that's a no. But it's just homeowners right now?
Yeah. I think that the program's being developed by the county at the moment, and I think my, our understanding based on some meetings we have with them is that the program they're developing would only be targeted at homeowners.
Well, and I think in the context of the property tax relief, just because it only goes to owners, but they're, the county does have funds through the federal package that are directed at renters. I believe the commissioner, the chairman, told me that they've received about $7 million. So, we probably need to talk with them a little bit more about how they're making that available to folks as a resource.
And I just named that because with the eviction moratorium ending at the end of this month, we are going to need to address that, either with our own eviction protection fund or partnership.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Okay. I feel like at the council chamber, this table's a little curved, so I can see everybody a little bit better, so sorry. All right. We have some folks signed up to speak under the public hearing, under the budget. So, that's what we're doing now. And just as a reminder, since we haven't done this in a long time, you'll have three minutes to speak, and I'm assuming Maggie, you're keeping time over there. So, watch out for Maggie. She'll swoop down there and grab you if you exceed your three minutes. So, the first person I have signed up to speak is Chris Peterson.
I just want to thank you for letting one of your sheep get up here for three minutes and have the, I don't know, pleasure of discussing a $200 million budget, but you're gonna give three minutes? It's okay. You know, you've been mayor for six years. You know what you do every year? You raise taxes for six years. You know? You know what saved you this year, the federal government? They wouldn't have given you that money, you'd be in big trouble. You know what? They saved you. That's okay. All y'all do is raise taxes. You know why you raise taxes? Because you're controlled. You're a one-party group. One-party group. It ain't only that, this group.
Sorry, I just, just the rules were not allowed to.
It's my time.
All right. I'm sorry. Yes. I'll make sure you get all your time.
I know how you like to throw people out, okay?
You're the only one I've ever thrown out.
Yeah, well, good.
So, no clapping, please, or cheering while other people are making their comments.
Can I get extra time?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Oh, and this is not the only crooked political group. You got a county. There's another crooked group. They got $50 million, but guess what? They're gonna raise your taxes. Boy, what nice people. You know, we've been in COVID a year and a half. Y'all have been hiding for a year and a half. You're giving 10 million in salaries? Are you kidding? Are you kidding? You hadn't worked in a year, you know? But you got a bloated budget, and that's what y'all do. You got the Fed money. That's fine. You work for a corrupt party. The party tells you, each and every one of you what to do. It's a joke. It's a joke. But the sheep will keep boating you in because you got 8,000 of them over there in North Asheville, West Asheville, that keep just pulling one ticket, and it's you guys. There's no other party. You know what happens in a one-party system? They burn books. They tell people they can't talk like me for three minutes. You know what? Countries like that, you might as well be in Venezuela, Cuba, same thing, China. You know what? It's, y'all are a joke. Mayor, you've been a joke. If you can't cut 10% out of a $200 million budget, you ought to quit. And I'm gonna tell you what you're really guilty of. You know, you talk about everybody being discriminated, and you play that little race game and get everybody to vote.
Please direct your comments to us.
You know what? Don't interrupt me, please. You'd love to do that. Anyway, you've neglected the business community.
Mr. Peterson, please direct us.
I'm neglecting it to your city manager because she has neglected the business community. You know who the biggest group that's discriminated against? The business community. And you know what? Who gets to pay the bills? Whenever you need the money, you come, you don't put us.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
You don't put us on any of your boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Hope they vote you out.
All right, folks, we'll just review one more time. We're gonna have, we're gonna continue with the public hearing. Please refrain from yelling and clapping while we're hearing from. If you don't like it, you're welcome to leave and watch this meeting remotely. And we've got a, you're making a whole bunch of police officers stand up there in the back, so. All right, let's try this again. We haven't met in person in a long time, so we'll try again. The next person signed up to speak is Tasha Etheridge.
All right. My name is Tasha Etheridge. I'm an Asheville native and resident. I also am here with three folks who are willing to cede their time for me, so if those folks will raise their hand.
Did they sign up on the?
Yes, they did.
Okay. So, raise your hand and tell me who you are. Mr. Greenson?
Yes.
And who else? Mr. Thomas? Okay. And who else? Okay. Well, this was for the, for the budget. We had folks sign up. Anyone else who signed up?
My name is Marla, I thought I answered you.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, I want to acknowledge that we are on stolen land built with stolen labor and lives. I acknowledge this land as Cherokee and Uchi and pay homage to my ancestors who were kidnapped and brought here and Indigenous folks forced from this land. I also want to acknowledge that this venue is inaccessible for many of your constituents, regardless of what the CDC has said. So many folks are unable or uncomfortable in attending an in-person meeting to voice their concerns alongside the community. I realize that you are live streaming, and I believe we can take this a step further and allow for virtual public comment within these meetings. This is something we made possible during the reparations discussion presented by the city, and I expect the same access in these city council meetings. I want to begin by talking about the things that the budget will include, housing, youth programs, paid family medical leave, and investment in transit, and many other beneficial, and some other beneficial things. These programs on face value will relieve many stresses that impact our communities. So, I want to thank all the community members who have advocated for these things. I'm thankful that you have listened to these requests. On July 14th, 2020, the city of Asheville vowed to address and rectify the harms that systemic, social, and institutional racism has inflicted on its Black residents. The county followed suit. And the UN states that there are five conditions for reparations: restitution, compensation, rehabilitation, satisfaction, and guarantee of non-repetition. But for any of these conditions to be successful, the cessation of harm must be implemented, meaning that the only way reparations can be satisfactory to the demographic that was and continues to be harmed is when that which is causing harm is addressed and it's stopped. So, as I come through the budget for the first time and saw that there was to be a property tax hike, and I saw that y'all are still funding the Asheville Police Department $30 million, I was angry. Because once again, I believe you have lied to my community and have reiterated that you do not care for the well-being of Black and Brown folk in the city. I thought of all the Black homeowners who could lose their homes they had held on so tightly to over years of y'all bulldozing our neighborhoods and communities that you deem blighted and we deem home. When you implement a tax hike that disproportionately affects Black neighborhood, it seems you're saying that Black lives don't matter. When you plan a relief program for these taxes that only hold 150,000, when you are taxing the community to earn 5.7 million, you're saying that Black lives do not matter. When you provide 30 million of funding for a police force that is destroying itself, that has outwardly stated that it cannot do its job, that we overpay to over-police our Black and Brown communities and children, I hear you saying that Black lives do not matter. And today, I hold the Black youth, men, women, and siblings who will continue to be stopped and hunted by white supremacy and regalia, who we pay to disappear Black lives, rampage our communities, and turn our eyes from the systemic harms that these systems perpetuate. You told me that Black folk in our public housing communities want and think that they need more police, and I ask you to ask yourself, is that what they are really asking? When you know that even before the police department was crumbling, it took them hours to show up in Black neighborhoods, seconds to gun our community members down, and hours to call for our bodies to be picked up from the streets? Data shows when we put more police in neighborhoods, violent crime is not reduced, drug trafficking is not reduced, cops are merely reactive. I don't hear community saying they need more cops. What I hear is people saying that we need to feel safe, we need to feel heard, and we need to be comfortable in our communities. What alternatives are you willing to provide to a community that has been calling out for help from you for years? How are you going to hold yourself accountable to the promises you made to the Black community? How are you going to address the harms that these racist systems have perpetuated in our city? How are you gonna do anti-racist work within your departments when you have failed the Equity and Inclusion Department and allowed for it to dissolve? How are you truly going to commit to reparations if you do not stop the harms that have and continue to be inflicted on our Black community? How are you going to hold yourself accountable to BIPOC communities you so proudly boast you are aiding with these initiatives? Again, when you continue to perpetuate the harm you all vowed to stop back in July, I hear you saying that Black and Brown lives don't matter. With this tax hike, I hear you saying that poor folk don't matter. I ask that you vote separately on reparations tonight and support the seed funding and create a space where all Black communities can engage in the reparations process. I'm thinking about the previous hearing, community event that was held on June 3rd, and not many Black community members showed up, nor were their live streams from community and not many black community members showed up, nor were their live streams from communities or this, or neither were these set up in our black communities. And I also have heard, heard you acknowledge that the amount is not sufficient for the entirety of the reparations process, and I look forward to you all identifying, committing to funding in the future. But tonight, I ask you to not vote on this budget on the 22nd if it does not implement drastic changes around providing tax relief in wake of this property tax hike. I ask that you do not vote on the budget unless you look into ways to divest money from our police department and invest into our communities in reimagining public safety and provide the public a timeline and a dollar amount you are willing to commit to this. And I ask that you truly begin working within your departments to implement anti-racist policies and initiatives to reimagining how you allow white supremacy to be perpetuated in our local government and in our community. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm recognizing this nap as kind of a workaround, but I can live with it. All right, the next person signed up to speak is Mel, and I think it's noise, but I'm positive it's an A or an O. I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I'm excited to finally be here, talking to y'all in person, where we have your full attention, and I'm sorry you can't mute yourselves and carry on conversations off-screen this time, but it's good to have you listening. Maybe you should bring back over-the-phone public comment, though, for people who can't make it here on time and to be more accessible. So now is your chance to deliver on the number-one demand that came out of the Black Lives Matter, what some say is the largest movement in our protest history, and that demand is to defund the police. Last year, it seems like, in order to save face from a disgusting display of police brutality that got national attention, y'all approved the reparations resolution that did not have receipts for where the money would go. Black locals explained to you that it needs to go to long-term safety strategies, including investing in black business, yet in a bizarre plot twist, you sold land to White Labs Brewery, built in a historically black neighborhood, enabling a white, upper-class, out-of-town business owner to make profit here indefinitely, while the black community gets a one-time payment to, we're not really sure where exactly. One of my friends recently broke down that 2.1 million in reparations and how it would translate to property ownership here, which I think is an excellent point. With that money, you could maybe create eight black homeowners in Asheville, yet with the tax hike you're proposing and the hoteliers you continue to court, it's almost impossible to pay to even live here. So what I'm saying is these reparations are still not good enough, and no one will get them anyway if you price them out of town. You must work reparations into the fabric of the city until there is increased black land ownership, black businesses are thriving, the achievement gap disappears, BIPOC stop filling jails at disproportionate rates, our communities have funded systems of care, and every cop has quit or been let go of. And I beg you not to raise our taxes only to fund a police department that is struggling to even exist. With the staff they have left, they prioritize targeting low-income communities, perpetuating the war on drugs and the school-to-prison pipeline. We said divest from the police and invest in communities, and that's literally what we mean. This is a form of reparations in and of itself, and will continue to heal not just the black community, but all people of color and the working-class Asheville as well. The funds are there, you just need to take them from APD. This town does not belong to cops and tourists, so have some courage to reflect the demands of the movement in the budget, or consider quitting your jobs. And side note, when the 200 houseless folks get kicked out of hotels at the end of the month, I really hope y'all leave them alone, no matter where they decide to camp. Shame on you for not thinking that one through.
The next person signed up to speak is Nina Tovish.
Good evening, Mayor Menheimer, Vice Mayor Smith, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on the subject of property taxes. I speak tonight to urge you to find an effective way to mitigate the cost of higher assessments and increased mill rates on Asheville's most vulnerable homeowners. So many of our fellow citizens struggle to make ends meet in the ongoing economic devastation of COVID-19. It's appropriate for the city and the county to offer support to those homeowners who need it most. I suggest that rebates be offered in the following manner, and some of these percentages or numbers might need some finagling, but I offer these as a first pass. First of all, it's important that homeowners be automatically enrolled in rebates if they meet specific criteria that are identifiable by city staff based entirely on property records. Citizens should not need to do anything, no forms, no documentation, no application. Eligibility for residential property rebates should be based on the following three-card criteria: tenure. I recommend that same-party homeownership for at least two assessment cycles prior. Property assessment increase. I recommend that rebates be provided to those who have seen their property value rise more than 30% over the last two assessments. And finally, the third criterion is property value. I suggest rebates should be issued to those whose property value is 80% or less of the area median residential assessment. City staff should be able to pull a list of PINS, that's parcel identification numbers, that would satisfy these three criteria and automatically earmark those residential properties for rebates. The rebates should equal the amount of taxes owed for the property under the new millage rate. Result for the owners of those residential properties that meet these three criteria would be effectively no net tax increase. I don't think 150K is going to cut it. I think it's going to need to be more. How much more contributed by the county is going to be matter, going to matter, but I think the city ought to seriously consider upping that amount. Please do not make people document their need with tax returns or any other kind of paperwork. There may be a few people who will get a rebate that they don't really need, but that's a small price to pay for a system that is easy to administer and its targeting takes little staff time and presents no barriers to homeowners' participation. Someone earlier mentioned this, and I would like to chime in. I also am concerned about renters who will bear the cost of higher taxes and millage rates in the form of higher rent. I urge council to earmark funds from the American Rescue Plan funds to assist renters at risk of eviction or sharply higher rents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Mullins.
Good evening, Scott Mullins. I'm the president of the Professional Firefighters, the Asheville Professional Firefighters, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Campbell and your team for the work on the budget this year. I know you've spent countless amount of hours on it, and we appreciate that as city employees. I rise in support of the city manager's proposed budget. Your firefighters appreciate and are encouraged by the amount of support we've seen from you all during all of these budget work sessions over the past few months. By enacting this budget, the city of Asheville employees will once again feel valued. There will be an instant boost in morale among city employees, and it will keep employees, especially firefighters, in Asheville. It will also help with recruiting a diverse pool of applicants. This is something we struggle with. We've been hitting the same group for years and years and years because of low pay, we're really stuck where we're at, and this will help us diversify our workforce. Your firefighters appreciate your service to the community and the long hours that you all have spent on the budget. We ask that you care for those that take care of the community, and on June 22nd, vote to enact the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Vicki Meath.
Hello, council. I'm here tonight to voice some support for a few things in the budget. First, I want to voice my support and on behalf of Just Economics, our support for living wages in the budget and maintaining a living wage policy, including that for firefighters. We have stood in solidarity with the Asheville firefighters in making sure that they are compensated fairly and appropriately for the work, the important work that they do in our community. Second, I want to voice some support for the funding for transportation in the budget. We have been advocating as Just Economics for a very long time for increased evening service hours and, and increased frequency to South Asheville, so I want to thank you for and encourage you to include those in your final version of the budget that is approved. And finally, I want to voice my support on behalf of Just Economics for a paid family and medical leave policy. While this does not have a huge impact on the budget, this is an important policy to set an example for employers in our community for family-friendly workplace policies. So I encourage you to maintain these things in the budget, and thank you for, for hearing me and for including those in the draft budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who signed up to speak is Taz. Okay. And the next person signed up to speak is David Young. Commissioner David Young?
Daniel.
Oh, I am very sorry. Daniel.
That's all right. I'm here speaking out for the defunding of the police department. The money need to be used for the fire department. You don't have the fire department telling us who they're going to protect, who they're going to save. You don't have the fire department killing our kids, but you have the police killing our kids. The money y'all using for the tax hike on the property should be used for us. How we going to get out of COVID situation? Y'all going to jack the prices up on the living? Come on. You got people that's still paying for people that died, but y'all want to jack the prices up on our houses? Come on, that don't make sense. Use that money for our community. Do right by the community. Y'all sitting up here not doing that, do what you got to do for our community, for our kids. Defund these police that want to kill us. Kill us, the black people, shooting our community up. That's who they targeting, but you don't have the fire department saying that. Y'all ain't listening. Come on. Do what you got to do for us. Stop wasting our time.
Thank you. Sharon Sumerall.
It's nice to see everybody in person for a change. Hi, I'm Sharon Sumerall. I'm a citizen of Asheville, and I'm on the Urban Forestry Commission, and I'm here to talk about bullet point environment. I'm here once again to ask for the need of an urban forester and an urban forest master plan. Staff is doing an admirable job, but there is so much falling through the cracks. Even with Green Works' involvement in training outside inspectors, it is taking months for violations of clear-cutting and grading to get any resolutions. The new Tree Protection Canopy Amendment may or may not be correctly implemented as field oversight is scarce due to staffing issues. An urban forester is an integral part of most modern cities. Asheville, with all of the current studies that have been done in the past and present, falls far behind in protecting our green infrastructure. A forester with a master plan is a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next person signed up to speak, I think, is Cappy, and the last, you'll tell us.
Hello, my name is Cappy Phelan. I'm a small business owner here. I have lived here for about two years, and I wanted to echo what Tasha said, and then also just say that police also don't make me feel safe. I know that there are some people who come to the police force with good intentions, but I also, all of the stories that I've heard from people that I love are stories of harm, and I feel that every day, and I carry that every day, and I'm worried about my community. And I'm sorry, I get really anxious with public speaking. I just want to, I want to make sure that you guys know that the support for reallocating funds from the police budget to reparations and to community safety is large, and the reason that you're not seeing as many people here is because we're busy and we have a lot going on, but the support is huge and vast, and we care. And I think something that unites us all as Asheville citizens and as people that we forget sometimes is something that Tasha said as well, which is safety. We all desire safety in our communities, and we want to sleep peacefully and wake up and have our neighbors be safe and have their needs met, and that will not happen if we're not caring for the most vulnerable among us. And I also would like for, if the property taxes are going up, to making sure that we are not, or that we are putting something in to protect the poorest of our community and black and minority members, if that has to happen. And the police budget is huge. It is militarized. If police means safety, there is so much in the police department right now that does not equate to safety. I do not feel safe when I see someone walking around with a weapon. My friends who were raped or assaulted by police officers do not feel safe when they see someone so powerful moving through the streets, and I just want us all to be able to unite in what safety means and to listen to our neighbors when they're asking for safety. Thank you.
Okay, that, that concludes the public hearing on the budget, and again, the, the budget will not be voted on until-
I signed up, but there was nobody up there. May I speak?
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hi, council. My name is Victoria Estes. It's good to finally see y'all in person. I have a few things to go over, so I'll cut to the chase. On reparations, the city just received our COVID recovery grant of over $15 million, which if used properly would allow us to cede the reparations fund with more than $2 million, because we all know $2 million will not be enough to properly begin repairing the damage that this city has done to our BIPOC communities. And we would like to see that $2 million at least be doubled to prove that the city's, the city council's dedication to following through on your promises of reparations. And if you really want to provide COVID relief, how about raising the city's minimum wage to pay an actual living wage instead of allowing super-polluting, child-killing, military-industrial factories like Pratt &amp; Whitney into our neighborhoods? And on public safety, whoa, that was way loud. There have been numerous instances across the nation of cities who have successfully defunded the police while making money for the city, making their city happier, making their people safer. You go look it up when you get home, all right? Anyways.
All right.
While replacing them with dispatchers who send unarmed teams that rely on de-escalation, nonviolent resolution, and harm reduction. Why are we not setting the stage for this type of public safety shift here? Why are we clinging to a police force that nobody wants and nobody even wants to work for? Defund the police, 50%. No more excuses. They already cut down your payroll for you. What's stopping you? On taxes, the current draft budget calls for a $5.7 million hike on property taxes. This comes immediately after huge spikes in home appraisals by the Buncombe County government in the past year, and there is ample evidence that these appraisals were deeply inequitable. These taxes, this tax increase will disproportionately affect our BIPOC community, no doubt. If you insist on this tax hike, the proposed $150,000 that's to be set aside to fund a property owner tax relief program needs to be greatly increased, and I agree with somebody that said it earlier, you need to automatically enroll these homeowners in that. There is no way that such a small amount of money will be able to offset the inequitable outcomes of this proposed property tax. It'll only work if it has a broad scope, is easy to apply for, and contains provisions to support lower-income homeowners and renters. And lastly, please allow people to continue calling in to comment to these meetings, just like the county commissioners did at their last meeting. Accessibility is a crucial part of a working representative democracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a brief break, and when we come back, we'll begin with our unfinished business. It is 6:30, I think, it is 6:30. So we'll come back at 6:45. Thank you. Okay, we are back in session. We have two items of unfinished business that we took public comment on at our last meeting, so at this meeting, we're just voting on them. The first is a vote to rezone property located at 99999 Glendale Avenue from RM16 Residential Multifamily High Density District to CI Commercial Industrial District. Do I have a motion to approve unfinished business item A?
Mayor, I'll move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Ms. Quinn, I'll second.
Okay, and again, we already took public comment on this item at the last meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Alright, do I, item B is a vote to amend the Unified Development Ordinance Articles 3, 5, 6, and 7 related to decision-making, administrative and advisory bodies, and related functions in order to bring the city's development code into alignment with recent state legislation. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, it's Gwen.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, our new business, item A is a resolution to establish initial funding for reparations and budget amendment in the amount of $2.1 million to fund reparations. Again, we heard a little bit about this already in the manager's report and Tony McDowell already presented on this during the budget presentation, that, that this will not come from fund balance, that it will come from the sale of White Labs. So are there any questions, Council, comments regarding this item? Or do I have a motion? And once I have a motion and a second, I will open the public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amount of $2.1 million in city's general capital project funds utilizing the sale, the land sale proceeds to provide initial funding for reparations.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from Council before we open the public comment? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, so we will, unless anyone else has any questions or comments, we're going to vote on this monumental moment. Alright. Alright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, alright. Our celebratory clapping exception, yes. It's only on here as one item. Should it have been on here as two items? Are you sure? You think so? I don't think we need, I, I think it's just a, a budget amendment because we already established the fund when we, when we created the community, the community table.
Mayor, we did, we, that's correct. The fund has been established internally. We do not need to take a separate vote. The vote you just took was the budget amendment, so that covers everything.
Yep, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the Vice Mayor for Boards and Commissions.
Alright, we met this morning, Boards and Commissions, and we came up with the following recommendations. For the African-American Heritage Commission, the Board of Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Ri, Thomas Ryan. Is there a second or comment?
Vice Mayor, after our meeting, I had the opportunity to speak to the Chair of the Commission and because there were so few applications and some were not actually in the city, the Chair requested that we hold the application process open for one more round.
Can I remove the motion and put forth another motion? Or you don't have, okay?
Just withdraw it, you don't need another-
I withdraw the motion. Okay, for the Board of Electrical Examiners, the Board of Commissions Committee recommends the reappointment of Drew Pike, Russell Thatcher, Roger Vault, and the appointment of Donald Shane Massey. And request that the Clerk's Office readvertise for the fifth seat. Can I get a second?
This is Ken's second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. For the Citizen Police Advisory Committee, the committee recommends the reappointment of Robert Hooper for the Housing Authority staff seat and the Clerk's Office will readvertise for the other opening positions. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, for the Civic Center Commission, the Boards and Commission Committee recommends the reappointment of Makunda Pacific and the appointment of Mitchell Eaton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the Historic Resources Commission, the committee recommends the appointment of Georgine Falcon and the Clerk's Office will readvertise for the other positions. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any opposed? And for the Human Relations Commission, the committee recommends the appointment of Crystal Reed. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. For Multimodal Transportation Commission, the committee recommends postponing appointments until the next month and will readvertise for those, those seats. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. And for the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, the committee recommends the reappointment of Mark Wesmer for the at-large seat, the appointment of Juan Pablo Shalarka for the seat representing 28801 area, and the Clerk's Office will readvertise for the open position for 28803, 28704 area. Can I get a second?
A second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and for the Noise Ordinance Appeals Board, the committee recommends reappointment of Wayne Willer, Patrick Gilbert for full terms, and the reappointment of Todd Levin for one additional year. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And for the Public Art and Cultural Commission, the committee recommends the reappointment of Johanna Hargarty and Ally McGee and the appointment of Reggie Tidwell. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the motion's carry for all.
Vice Mayor, can we go back? Did we get a vote on the Historic Resources Commission?
Yes.
There was one, I thought that we had a, a motion, but no vote.
Are you talking about doing committee or mail?
It was, it was other Civic Center or Historic Resources Commission, but we missed, I think we missed a vote.
There was one that we said, we went right to as anyone opposed, but there wasn't an actual, I wasn't sure if it mattered.
I assume we just-
I think it was historic.
Well, I'll call it for everybody's confidence.
It was historic.
For the Historic Resource Commission, the Board recommends Georgine Falcon and the readvertisement for the open seat. Can I get a second?
Councilwoman Mosley seconded that.
Alright, so we have a vote for all of the committees.
So, so I think that we, on that one, with the motion, we just missed the, all those in favor, please say aye. You said anyone opposed, anyway, I thought it was fine. So we're all in favor, we're all in favor of that. We're in favor, okay.
And I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. That brings us to the informal discussion and public comment portion of our agenda and, and we don't have a closed session, so this will close us out. We did have one person who signed up to speak and there was some kind of kerfuffle up there that I didn't get the, get it on here for, for the budget, so I'm gonna let that person speak. But normally, the informal discussion, public comment portion of the agenda is for items that are not on the agenda, but this will be the exception since we missed somebody under the budget public hearing. And that person is Grace Barron Martinez. If she's still, oh, she is, good. Again, three minutes under, under this section of the agenda for each speaker.
Sorry, I was at, I was at work, which is one of the reasons why I feel like these meetings should be made more accessible to everyone. It's really good to see all of your faces. I've been listening to many of the voices of the folks in and outside of this room as they've called in over the course of the past year. And I just want to say that I'm really grateful to be in community with people who are taking the time to be engaged and help make Asheville a better and safer place for everyone. I'm especially grateful for the black and brown leaders and all their work and sacrifices that they make in doing it. I know so many of you have experienced horrendous violence at the hands of the Asheville Police Department, the National Guard, and the other local law enforcement who were called in to put down the resistance against white supremacy last summer. And yet, here we are, a year later, with many of us still struggling with the trauma that was inflicted in our streets. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Where folks were gassed and pepper-balled and injured in various ways, including a fractured skull. And yet, the primary demand to divest from policing and invest in our communities has not been addressed at all. In fact, the police have conveniently defunded themselves with 82 officers leaving the department and yet, here we are with the same budget, with no detail as to how this discrepancy and savings from lack of staffing will be used. We have an opportunity here to truly reimagine what public safety looks like because we know that our community is not safe under a carceral police state and that police are not equipped to handle many of the problems that our community faces. What happened to the 30-60-90 plan where defunding was supposed to be on the table? Why haven't we seen any budget proposals for crisis response teams for mental health, substance use, and houselessness response? Saying these are under development is not enough and we've had ample time to at least begin development and allocate resources to them, perhaps with the dollars saved from those 82 fewer sworn officers. This is, thank you. This is such an important moment and we need you as our elected leaders to use your power and your voices to change this budget and to reflect the needs of our community. I'd also like to say that I'm happy to be here in person, but what's happening in our city is not transparent or accessible at all and I'm really shocked by how little detail the budget includes and it's presented in a really convoluted manner. And the city needs to put out digestible, easy-to-understand information and also reopen access to remote callers to maximize community access. Our city is struggling, you have the power to support our community and you've been given this opportunity, but here you are allocating more money to policing with the passage of the high-intensity drug trafficking grant tonight. And I have seen the harm that imprisonment's caused to children and families in our community and seen the way that substance use is causing death and harm. Policing cannot solve these problems. Please adjust this budget.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? You, you can, yes, you can, just state your name, please.
Hi, it's Meligan. So I just wanted to read the recent recommendation that came out of the HRCA because I'm afraid that it won't get prioritized, even though the houseless community, it's, it's regarding the encampment removals, an issue that affects predominantly and disproportionately black and brown people. So, we, the aforementioned, aforementioned members of the Human Relations Commission of Asheville, henceforth known as the HRCA, stand in solidarity with the residents of Asheville and the houseless community affected by inhumane encampment removal, hereby offer a formal recommendation to the City Council, to the Asheville City Council. We, the aforementioned members of the HRCA, strongly recommend that the Asheville City Council swiftly remove the following ordinances slash city code articles, city code chapter 12, article 3, section 12-51 and section 12-52, immediately seizing encampment removals on city, city property. In addition, the aforementioned members of the HRCA recommend the Asheville City Council redirect ordinance enforcement and federal homeless assistance funds to provide or improve sanitation receptacles at known encampment sites. We, the aforementioned members of the HRCA, recommend these amendments to be implemented 60 days from today, which is actually, when this was made, this was to make sure that it was done by the 30th of this month, when houseless people will be kicked out of hotels, almost 200 people. In order to prevent residents and visitors in and of Asheville from potential and/or continued health and public safety issues and so that we may all move forward with good faith efforts supported by the peoples, peoples of Asheville, our partners in the region, and members of Asheville City Council to make the city of Asheville a more equitable and inclusive place for all. And we can get you the members that signed off on this at a later date. But yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yeah, I think we were over here, next to first, then I'll come back over here.
Hello, my name's Greenleaf Clark. I'm gonna tell you a little story just to catch you up on why you even heard me speak in a couple months. I was assaulted by the white supremacist gang that the two people in blue over here are a part of. I'm not the only person. There have been a lot of us. And the reason, in fact, that we got assaulted was because we were trying to protect some of our most vulnerable community members, as we do, that is the work that abolitionists do, day in and day out. That is not the work that cops do. They are here to cause harm and to create terror in our communities. So, little backstory. In case you're not aware of the harm that your city government is doing, we're friends with a lot of folks living on the streets. And those folks have been living in the best situations that they can put together, whether that's an encampment on Cherry Street or an encampment in Aston Park. They're doing the best they can. Time after time after time, they find a little bit of peace and security just to have this city government sweep in, you know, under the guise of a sanitation department with a giant claw that takes all the possessions they can't carry with them and shoves them into a dumpster. And then when they're not fast enough, getting harassed by the cops. And yeah, Captain Mike Lamb will show up with a creepy-ass smiley face on and pretend like everything's okay, but it's not. The problem has accelerated because the city government has stopped doing one encampment here, one encampment there, and started clearing all of them. Back in April, you cleared all of them. Our 500 community members living on the streets had nowhere to go other than the completely insufficient shelters that the city provides. So, they wanted to have somewhere to be and they wanted to stay at Aston. I won't give you too many details because I have pending charges around this and I can't talk about that. But guess what? The cops came through and they took people away from the little bit of security that they had. They did it with violence, they did it with force, they ripped down signs, they marched up in a phalanx like Gestapo and then ripped people away from the little bit of a home that they had. And we were there with food, with medical care, with water, trying to set up bathrooms. That's the work we're trying to do. That's the work we're trying to help our community with. I would love for y'all to get on board with that or get out of the way. We're trying to take care of people. Join us.
Real quick, I just want to encourage you all to use American Rescue Plan funds to, to set up a, some more supports for evictions and for renters in our communities. The eviction moratorium is about to expire. We're gonna see a huge increase in people being evicted. We have great partners in this community like Piscilegal that can help with identifying where those needs are. And I just encourage you to use those funds to do such. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roy Harris and I realize today I have lived in Asheville longer than I ever lived anywhere. I think maybe Maggie was here. When I started my trek into public boards and those kinds of things. I sort of said last night that, and asked the group last night, do I leave or do I stay? And that was a question. Well, I've decided to stay. But, there's a caveat to it. I'm gonna take this agenda, fold it and put it in an envelope and send it to my two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. And I'm gonna put some money in this envelope. And that is so that in 17 years, she will come back to Asheville. And when she comes back to Asheville, she used to stay in the Airbnb, Airbnb across from me, where we live at now. And her role is to take this agenda and say, did you make a difference? By that time, she'd be going off to college and so I'm willing to pay for- By that time, she'd be going off to college, and so I'm willing to pay for that first year. She's going to need a job that year, so I've decided that I will pay for her to come to Asheville, even if I'm not around, to look at the issues that we're facing now to see if we actually did what we said we were going to do. And y'all know some of the issues, and I appreciate y'all going through what you went through this year in 2020. 2020 set us, you know, as a, a year that we will never forget. But, as we come out of that year and go to other things that we need to do in the city, I feel hopeful. I see hope. And as I see hope in everything, you are the ones that we've been waiting for. So, we don't have to wait for anybody else. You're it. Do your thing. Do what you got to do. But make us proud such that when Ivory Gillespie returned to Asheville in 17 years, and flip through the pages and see who was sitting on the dais at that time, and what she will see, and then she's to take that report and return back to her mother who was raised in this town, and make a report to her. On this dais, I see babysitters that once babysat at my house. I see one babysitter that probably didn't get very much chance, but she was always trying to figure out how to go to my house and babysit. I see people that I see on the street of Asheville. So, good luck. Ivory will be here in 17 years, and she will be checking on the progress that we made here. Thank you.
Nina. Nina Tovish. I'd just like to say it's a pleasure to be in the same room with all of you again. It's a pleasure to hear you all say aye in unison. It's a wonderful sound of women's voices altogether. It's really, it's really sweet, since we've only been hearing you via Zoom for a long time, and that's not such an exciting medium. However, after the year that we've been through, I think it's incredibly important that we find the things that actually worked for us. And one of those was because of technology, like video conferencing, a lot of people who otherwise wouldn't have been able to attend meetings were able to attend them. They were able to not have to worry about transportation. If they were not well, they were able to attend. They were able to see their government in action and participate. If they weren't able to work, they were able, they didn't have to be someplace at some time. They were able to time shift it. This is all a great improvement in accessibility and transparency. I strongly urge you to allow remote participation as we go forward in person. It's wonderful to all be in the same room, but for those who can't be in the room, it's wonderful to be able to participate and have your voice heard remotely, whether that's by phoning in, whether that's by a video telepresence, whatever it takes. I'm a broken record on this, but the process of signing up days in advance that we had while we were doing remote video conferencing was really hobbling as well. It didn't allow people the opportunity to respond contemporaneously to what was happening in the meeting. In the interests of public engagement, I urge you to undertake means where people can respond in the moment to decision-making that's happening in front of them, whether it's via screen or in person. After all we've been through in the last 14 months, and what we'll be looking forward to in terms of recovery over the next years, and it will be years, I think it's important that we derive every bit of value possible from the lessons we've learned from having to make adjustments to difficult conditions. And I see no reason why we can't glean the good from the things we had to do by necessity and carry those forward into the future. Thanks for your attention.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening? You're deferring. Okay.
Yes. Hi, Tisha Athrich again. I also go by Gritz. I thought I had to list my legal name, but I prefer Gritz. Yeah, I just wanted to return briefly to the reparations process and how the city's going about it, especially with the second truth-telling event happening this Thursday. As I mentioned earlier, I didn't believe that it's been made very accessible to our communities. But I also want to note that the RJC has been doing the Walk the Walk campaign since December of last year. Within that, we have interviewed around 400 to 500 Black residents. And without punching numbers, but based on the conversations I am having with my community members and the folks who are helping me, I could easily say that 90% of those folks have either not heard of reparations or have no idea of what the city is putting in place. And so, as we come to our second truth-telling phase, I, I hope that, of course, this isn't an initiative that the city does and then goes quiet. I know we are in the phase of, I guess, like organizing this commission, and I think it's very necessary to make sure that this is accessible to everyone. Before you open up the ability to be on a commission, you should open up to the entire Black community what your reparations plan is, or what reparations is, and the fact that you all vowed to it. And so, I currently am under the personal impression that we are moving a little quickly in a way that may end up causing more harm than fixing any. And so, I ask that, as we continue in our reparations process, the city is putting forth initiatives, whether with community engagement, or the money that will be allocated, to make sure that every Black resident in Asheville is, has accessible informations, information regarding the reparations process, and is given a chance to engage in it. The Black community is not a monolith. I'm sure we have all heard this, and, and if you truly believe it, then I think you all should be doing work to give everyone, all Black people in Asheville and in Buncombe County, the opportunity to engage with the process. I'm just going to say again, last week's event proved itself to not be sufficient for the Black community, as not many Black community members showed up. Based on the numbers that you gave me, not, not much community showed up. The Black community in Asheville is small, and the numbers are dwindling, but I know that it's more than 238. And so, yeah, especially with a process that's supposed to center truth and healing.
Apparently, that's Maggie's new timer.
Oh, hey. Well, truth and healing, you have to involve the community who is being harmed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Jonathan?
Hey, my name's Jonathan Wayne Scott. I saw that you were in the paper about a couple weeks ago for taking umbrage with a local publication, not telling the, the full story on an issue, thought it was a little bit one-sided. And I think they, the headline even said that you'd threaten the, the publication with talking to their donors and sponsors to have, you know, to remove their funding and all that kind of stuff. And I thought, I was wondering if you were thinking about the 2019 conversation where everybody in town thought that we were doing the right thing by renewing our 1931 Jim Crow-designed election system. But that wasn't, that wasn't the story. But I am concerned about the press in this town. I mean, Van Winkle Law Firm gives a whole lot of money to WCQS, our local NPR affiliate. It's almost like local news brought to you by the mayor. That doesn't sound like it's a, you know, a really good system there. And of course, our Asheville Citizen Times was founded by a Klansman, and that paper really leaned into and was a cheerleader for our 1931 election system that we set up. And they, you know, were a cheerleader for it in, in 2019. WCQS doesn't have any Black people that work there at all. None. The Mountain Express doesn't have any Black people on its staff right now. The editorial board that supported the 2019 renewal of our Jim Crow election system didn't have any Black people working at it at the time. So if you're wondering why you're not finding out about the things in this town, and you've got the, the Buncombe County Explore Asheville, Explore Asheville, 26 people, all of them white, spending $26 million a year, $70,000 a day, every day Saturday and Sunday sponsoring the reparations, truth-telling. That's crazy. That's crazy. That's unacceptable. I don't know why we're sponsoring. I mean, I guess some people are going to be glad that we didn't spend tax money. I'm totally stoked. We should. I missed, I missed the first one. I'm going to be there Thursday. Can't wait to be there. I know it's not your fault. I know this is not your fault, you know? I'm not yelling at you guys, but I'm just a citizen who's outraged at the, the, the way our town is covered. You know, I've, I've been trying to be a lot more convivial with everybody. You know, three minutes doesn't afford a whole lot of time for pleasantries. I would like to, you know, be able to kick around and smile a lot more often with you guys. But, you know, this is, this is an embarrassment. Our conversation about our charter change two years ago is the most unbelievable embarrassment, embarrassment that we could have, as we're going to set ourselves on an international stage for, for doing reparations. So, good to see you guys again.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Hello again. I just wanted to share a personal story, because I know that sometimes that has more of an effect than numbers and statistics and studies. So, growing up, I grew up here. I am 25 years old. Was born and raised in western North Carolina. My family is actually some of the original colonizers in Asheville, from all the way back in the beginning of the 1700s. I'm proud of it, but I'm also not. I can recognize both things. Something I will say is, I'm sure you guys are aware of the statistic that America makes up 4% of the world population, yet we have 25% of the prison population housed here. Most disproportionately, Black, Brown, and Indigenous folks filling those prisons. My family was torn apart by the carceral system. At a young age, my oldest uncle got in a lot of trouble with the law because he was hard-headed. That seems to run in my family. And he ended up making a reputation for the rest of my family, which he had three, and then one half-brother after that, all of which were targeted by law enforcement, including my own father. As a young child, one of my father's worst memories is of being 10 years old, taking a nap on his couch when the police came in the house, looking for his older brother, and then woke him up, shook him, and said, "You're next, motherfucker. We're going to get you." Apologize. That's what the cops said, though. And that instilled the fear in my father. They grew up poor. They had four boys. My grandma worked full-time, was a single mother for a lot of it. You know, poverty is not a crime. My, my uncle got put in prison for petty, petty thievery, petty robbery. He was there for my entire life. He got out briefly. And they put him back in on false charges, and he died there last year. My family still does not have justice. We don't have any answers. We know that whether he was getting brutalized by the people in the prisons, if he was, if it wasn't the other inmates, it was the cops that worked there, that were brutalizing him. We know that he was put in solitary confinement all the time and left there constantly, which can do a lot to people. The letters he's written me are pretty, pretty terrifying. They're really hard to read. This tore my family apart. My family doesn't get together for holidays anymore, because this broke my father. This broke my grandmother, my family, and not just physically, like financially, thousands and thousands of dollars trying to have our family member back, who never hurt a single person. Please defund the police. This happens to Black people way more than it happens to people of my skin color. But it happens to all of us. Do your part to make it work. Thank you.
My name is Shay. I hope you all are sitting here with an immense amount of gratitude. Gratitude for the intense emotional labor that these people are giving you right now to talk about their stories. They don't have to be here. This is triggering. This is trauma that all these people are sharing with you right now. And to look at us and to give us eye contact and then go forward and not follow through on the things we're asking you to do is violence. Hold gratitude, acknowledge your privilege, and do better with what you have. I really, really hope you take the time to thank these people for their emotional labor and mental labor today. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. We'll have our next council meeting back here on June 22nd. Oh, and there, this week you're talking about, okay. And, and as was already talked about this evening, we have an event in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium Thursday evening, starting at 5:00, with the formal portions starting at 6:00. So, thank you.